We are back in open session. Mr. Ritchie.
I recommend that minutes pertaining to the privacy of students and their records, home instruction, remain sealed.
Motion.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Those in favor? It's unanimous. Number two.
I recommend that minutes pertaining to collective bargaining, MOU buy-in among the National Education Association, Charahoe, NAREE, NEA, and the Charahoe Regional School District Committee remain sealed.
Motion.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Luzon.
You ready, sir?
I am. Thank you.
We had four votes in executive session. The first vote was a denial of a homeschool request. There was three in favor, two opposed, and three abstentions. In favor: Callahan, Day, Luzon. Opposed: Stanley, Macaruso, abstaining, Dimoff, Juisty, Lial. We had a second vote concerning the executive session minutes of October 8, 2019, NEA ESP negotiations. Seven in favor, zero opposed, one abstention, zero recusals. In favor: Callahan, Day, Dimoff, Juisty, Lial, Macaruso, Stanley, abstaining, Luzon. Third vote: memorandum of understanding between NEA and Charahoe. Eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions, zero recusals. In favor: Callahan, Day, Dimoff, Juisty, Luzon, Lial, Macaruso, and Stanley. Fourth vote was returning to regular session to visit you folks. We had eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions, zero recusals. In favor: Callahan, Day, Dimoff, Juisty, Luzon, Lial, Macaruso, Stanley.
Thank you.
That's it, sir.
On to recognition, sir.
Please join me in congratulating the high school repurposed fashion and design workshop under advisor Dana Hall. They are the recipients of the Rhode Island After School Network Program of the Year Award. Also, join me in congratulating North Kingstown High School senior Rene Fontaine for assisting a Charahoe cross-country runner who had a medical emergency while running.
This brings us to public forum. If there's any members in the audience tonight who would like to discuss anything not already on the agenda? No? All right. That was pretty easy. On to business. Letter A, net metering contract.
I recommend approval of the contract between the Charahoe Regional School District and Kirsage Solar LLC, which has been reviewed by your legal counsel.
So move.
We have a motion and a second to approve the contract between Charahoe and Kirsage Solar LLC. Bill.
I have one concern, not so much with the contract, but with our existing facility over here now. And I noticed in the question and answering section that we have here, will there be new fencing that surrounds and replaces solar system? And your answer is that will be fenced, will meet all current safety standards. My concern is that, and correct me if I'm wrong, we have no safety standards in our existing facility out there. It's wide open to anyone. The panels are accessible to anyone who may step on them, the wiring. So I would like to, if it's necessary to make an amendment, that we decommission our existing system immediately, rather than waiting for you people to get on board with that, because I'm very concerned. I'm a volunteer fireman. I've taken two courses on firefighter safety, and the one thing that we've all learned is you don't go into a solar field under any conditions, circumstances, unless National Grid is there or the owner of the facility is there. And right now, our facility out there is wide open to anyone, anytime, day or night. Those solar panels are operating as long as there's light. So they're always energized. So this is why I want to make sure that tonight we have an understanding that that thing would be decommissioned yesterday. So I hope I've made myself clear on this and...
Yes, you did. I guess I got a question, a follow-up question, and it's for the timing on this. With respect to the existing structure, what was the timeframe in which it would be decommissioned or taken down? Yeah, you can. Absolutely. If you could just take the podium, please, so we have a record for the viewers.
Hi, Andrew Bernstein from Kirsage Solar. The timing is when we put up the new facility, we were going to decommission the old facility because it's basically, for us, it's a question of cost. You've got to get people here, you've got to remove the panels, you've got to take out the inverters. I think Mr. Day is absolutely correct. You should have fences around every solar facility. Every solar facility we do, and the electrical code requires the facilities to be fenced in. Having said that, the danger is pretty minimal. What you have in terms of right now, firefighters are told if there's ever a fire on a facility, you don't touch it. But in terms of operating the facility, the greatest issue is really the transformer and the inverter, which I don't know with your facility if they're locked. The panels themselves are glass and steel. And as I was saying before, you can put your hand on a panel during the day and you're not going to burn it. It's more a question of the electrical issues, which I think probably, Bill, you're referring to. And if they're locked, that's the greatest concern.
Okay. Okay. So I guess then, in terms of timeframe for general construction, when was that again?
In the first quarter. But I'm happy we've received two bids on this. There's availability, you have to get approval from National Grid, but I'm happy to ask the contractors if they can come down and look at trying to decommission this as soon as possible.
Okay.
That's a fair request. And we can certainly talk to them, but you do need people to come. Basically, there is electrical wiring and turning off the facility, but the greatest issue is really on the transformer and the inverter.
Okay. Bill?
I don't want to belabor the point, but I've been out there, looked at it. There are footprints on those panels. Students have stepped on those panels. And I honestly, you know, I don't know as much about this as you do, but I do know that if there's a crack there and somebody steps on one, there's going to be a feedback to the person stepping on that panel. Correct?
There's going to be feedback.
Electric, electrical coming through that crack in that panel.
Not really, because the way panels work...
That ain't what we've been told as firefighters.
Not with our understanding, because the way panels work is they're absorbing it, and it's got to go into the inverters. I haven't heard that. I don't know anything that, we've never had that issue. I mean, I can tell you that if panels get hit by a rock or crack or things like that, there's no danger when we have our guys on site, our O&amp;M team. The greatest danger is the wires, because the power itself has to be, gets converted from DC to AC through the inverters. So it is live, you're absolutely right, in the sun, but we certainly can look into as soon as possible getting someone out to try to decommission it.
Okay. Any challenges with that approach from the administration side? Barrett?
So I don't, I don't get the science behind it. Is it as simple as finding the on-off switch and turning it off?
What you could do, which could be a better solution immediately, is get a tarp, any type of covering, and throw it over the panels, because then there's no electricity that's generated at all. And if you want to have complete safety, any type of tarp that blocks the sun will serve that purpose. Because the panel, it's just like right now, there's obviously zero danger because there's no energy being generated.
Right.
And that would be the easiest approach that you could do right away.
But there's no, is there an on-off switch?
I assume with your, there's an on-off switch for the power going back into your, because it's behind the meter system, it's not going back out in the grid. You can do that, but if you take a solar panel, hold it up with no wires, put it in the sun, it's live. So it's generating. So the easiest and safest solution would be to get, you don't even have to spend a lot of money, get one of those black tarps that you put on top of a roof to block sun or things like that, and tape it from one side to the other, and you completely would shut down the system.
Yes, sir.
Chris with the Office of Natural Resources, so I think Kirsage is saying they can, they'll try to decommission as quick as possible. Oops, sorry. Thank you.
That would have been great.
So I think what Kirsage is saying is they will decommission it, they will try to move that process along as quick as possible. An interim solution may be to cover the panels with the tarp, maybe put some construction orange PV fencing around the perimeter of it as an interim solution, because again, this system has been installed by the school. It's been there for over 15 years.
Right.
So it's just a question of timing in terms of being able to decommission again.
Okay. I'm satisfied with that response. Any further discussion on this? Bill, is that sufficient for you? We can shut it down with the tarp, and we can find out what the feedback is as far as how rapidly we can decommission it.
Well, I want to say my training has been that as a firefighter, we go on a roof of a house that has solar panels, we don't step on it, and we don't use an axe to break the panels. And this is contradicting to what this gentleman's saying about how safe these panels are.
Okay. Understood.
I just have to make that clear, that my training states you don't step on these panels, you don't break them with an axe or the integrity on any of them.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion on this? Okay, we have a motion and a second for the approval of the contract. Those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. As soon as you find out, would you please let Sue know?
Sure.
Awesome.
Could I ask Donna to give me the contract, so we can get Andrew to sign it now, and then you'll just have to sign it later?
Yep. That way you guys can all go. Or stay. A lot of good things happening here.
Two copies, Susan. And where it's got the little, there you go. There is Barry and Andrew. You don't have to sign it. You don't have to sign it. Awesome.
Rooftop panels, the electrical code changed. Three years ago, the panels were much more dangerous than they are now. They were required to have rapid shutdowns. So they did have issues with rooftop.
Okay.
My training states that we don't make any contact with them.
Thank you, sir. We don't need Sue for this, so we are on to letter B.
Letter B in your packet is the Chinese three-course proposal. I recommend approval of the high school Chinese three-course proposal.
So move.
Motion and a second to approve the Chinese three-course proposal. Any discussion on this?
Impressive.
Those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you.
We've got to separate you two. No, the impressive.
Letter C.
So letter C is the World Language Curriculum Revision, K-12. Recommend approval.
So move.
We have a motion and a second to approve the World Language Curriculum Revision, grades K through 12. Any discussion? Bill.
It's not really a concern about this, but there are any way that when we get packages like this with so much reading material, that we can spread this out over different meetings? Because I found it rather difficult to find the time to digest all of this information in this package in a short period of time, so...
Understood.
Just a concern.
Thank you. Any discussion on the curriculum? I know Jane, you ready for a presentation you have for us? Okay.
I just want to honor the work of the curriculum team that developed this and worked on this curriculum. They actually began this summer. There's four curriculum this year that are under revision, and this one's done first. And that's because they committed again their time this summer to get started, so... And the other thing I just wanted to speak to is the fact that as we move forward and talk about curriculum and instruction, we want to continue to be reminded of how it aligns to our district strategic plan. So in our district strategic plan for priority area five, that's global citizenship, actually the new course that you just approved in Chinese three, and now the world language curriculum are very much aligned to what we're trying to achieve in the strategic plan, which is to increase our world language proficiency for students and also cultural proficiency for students. And that's what the work in this curriculum and the changes hope to achieve. So the team is listed here. And again, as we've done in other curriculum, you're going to notice if it has a yellow highlight, it's because it's new language. And if it has crossouts, it's because it's language that we're going to eliminate or delete. One new feature of this particular curriculum is this chart. And the reason I want to call your attention to the charts is just because they emphasize how we're trying to really focus on the proficiency of students in world language. And so you can see like at what level of proficiency they'll be at what grade level, K to 12 in the district. Another major change that you're going to find in the curriculum is the fact that we have now gone through a successful cycle of students that are currently in fifth grade having elementary world language all the way through. So starting when they were in kindergarten, learning Spanish, and having that all the way through, this will be the first, you know, group of students. So that has really led to a lot of vertical articulation discussions amongst the staff as to what changes need to be made in the curriculum, so that students now, you know, are learning at a higher level when they enter middle school, because they already have quite a bit of background knowledge from elementary. Another change you'll notice in the elementary curriculum is just there's a lot of alignment to the social studies standards. So when they are teaching the students the Spanish language, they're also aligning and building on what the students have learned or are learning in social studies. So it's a nice connection for kids, and it helps them remember it better. And those are just the most significant differences. And again, I'm proud of the work they've done. I think our program has improved tremendously over the past few years, and it is due to the fact that we have had started with students in kindergarten now, learning a world language. And we've added to our high school courses by adding Chinese in the last few years. So that's all. Thank you.
And I definitely appreciate the amount of work that it goes into rewriting this. It's very promising. Questions for Jane on this item? No? If there's no further discussion, then we do have a motion and a second to approve world language curriculum. Those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Letter D.
I recommend approval of the microbiology curriculum.
So move.
Motion and a second to approve the microbiology curriculum. Open to discussion. And Jane, you also have comments on this one? Thank you.
And I apologize, I forgot to recognize John Pecoraro, who's here. He's the world language department leader, and he led the work on that curriculum. And also Susie Scannapiego's here, who helped to lead the work on this microbiology curriculum. And the microbiology curriculum, that's a result of actually a course proposal that you approved last year. So that was a new course last year. This is all aligned to priority area four from our strategic plan, which is about improving post-secondary options for students, because what we did is we added the biotechnology program as one of our new career tech programs. And this is a course that's part of that program. You'll notice the format of the curriculum is the same as all of the curriculum for our science courses. It's aligned to the next-generation science standards. And once, it's not in highlight and crossout, because the entire document's new, but once, if it is approved, then it will be posted on our website with the rest of the science curriculum. That's it.
Outstanding. That's an outstanding curriculum. Thank you. It's open for discussion?
When you move the first course to be for next year?
Yes. It would be in the program, the biotechnology program. This is offered in grade 10. It's a half-credit course, and that's the second year of the program. So it started this year, so that would begin next school year, I believe. Am I off on that? I might be off on that. It might have started this year.
We started one pilot session this year. We, you know, obviously changed the curriculum a little bit, but we put what the official documents might...
Right.
...feedback from students. We needed to get it in so that no student lost the pathway option. So it was kind of a timetable issue more than anything.
Okay. Thank you. Grant?
Can you give the interest, student population for this?
I don't have any official numbers, but I know that the students had asked for a lot of these sciences. When I was at Open House, it was the most popular program. I spoke about was the microbiology. I have parents who are coming up to us, asking specifically about it. So I do know that there is an interest. The biotechnology class has an interest. They have their lab coats on, there's a lot of hands-on learning, and so I think the pathway has in itself become more popular.
Thank you.
Further questions from the committee? No? We have a motion and a second on the floor to approve microbiology curriculum. Those in favor? Thank you. It's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Letter E.
Letter E is a presentation from Jane about PSAT, SAT, and AP results. In a coming agenda, we'll do the RICAS, which we just released today.
Okay. Thank you. Jane, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So the intent of this presentation is to explain our results for the 2018-19 PSAT 10 and SAT test. Those are the state tests now for students in 10th grade and 11th grade in Charahoe. And looking at our PSAT results, if we look over three years, you can see that it was in English, which is called evidence-based reading and writing. Seventy-three percent of our students either met or exceeded expectations. Another way to look at that is also think of them as being on track to meet college and career-ready benchmarks. And now, this year, we had up to 80 percent. So just since last year, it's a 3 percent improvement. So 80 percent of our students who were in 10th grade last year met that benchmark for English or evidence-based reading and writing. For math, it was 48 percent. That was a decline since last year. Last year it was 55 percent, but when you go back to three years ago, it was an increase. So it was 43, and now it's 48 percent. So again, that's for the PSAT. And then when we look at the SAT results, so that's students that were in 11th grade last year, then you'll see that in evidence-based reading and writing, or ELA, that 71 percent met those college and career-ready benchmarks. Again, that's another way of saying they met or exceeded expectations on the state test compared to 68 percent last year. And then in math, it was 54 percent for the SAT, which was an increase of 6 percent over last year, which was 48 percent. So you can see that we're increasing in the SAT in both English and math. And then what this shows is just how we compare to the state. So that was just showing how we compared to ourselves at the high school. But now, if you look at our district results and you compare those to the state results, you can see that 78 percent of students at Charahoe were at that college-ready benchmark or met or exceeded expectations compared to 60 percent statewide. So we were 18 percent higher than the state, and that's an ELA for PSAT. For PSAT math, it's 46 percent of students in Charahoe compared to 31 percent of students And then when you go to SAT results for ELA, it is 70 percent of students in Charahoe are performing at those benchmarks or meeting or exceeding expectations compared to 51 percent statewide. And then on math, it's 53 percent in Charahoe compared to 32 percent statewide. And then we did initially talk briefly about AP scores when they first came out, but as I've done in the past, we said we'd come back and talk about it a little more in-depth. So I just wanted to show you what the five-year scores have been on AP. And you can see back in 2015, 48 percent of students had a score of three or higher. And this last year, 78 percent. So we have gone up tremendously, and it's not a one-time thing. You can see there's been a steady increase, but even like the last two years, how much higher that's been, that it's been up to 74 percent last year, and then again, 78 percent in 2019. So we continue to improve, and our students continue to score higher on their AP scores. A score of three or higher is very important, because that's the score that most colleges accept for college credit. So that's why we look at that statistic or that data point. And, you know, a question that might come up, well, your scores are going up, but is that because you have less students taking the test? And that's not the case at all. So you can see in the top row, that's the number of students that are in advanced placement courses over the last five years, and that it continues to increase as long, as well as the actual students scoring a three or higher also increases. And then just some highlights. What this just talks about is that those numbers of students increased from 164 to 194 over three years. That's an 18 percent increase in the students actually taking the courses. And then you go down to the increase in the scores, it's actually a 37 percent increase over those three years as to how they're performing. So the data's really positive. Looks great for advanced placement. To get into a little more detail, we actually have this year for every course we offer in advanced placement, how students did compared to the previous year. So now we're even going deeper, not just saying overall that our performance was better, but let's look at it more in-depth and see where is it better, in what courses. I just want to highlight a few. I would say in 10 of the courses, and they're shown on these next two slides, we increased the average score of students obtained on the test. So on 10 of the different courses, that average score increased. Only four of the courses, the score decreased. And that in seven of the courses, over 90 percent of the students got a three or higher on the test. So that's huge. One example, you'll see Studio R. So, you know, there were seven kids that took the test. So, you know, there were seven kids that took the test in 2018, fourteen students in 2019, and one hundred percent of them got a score of three or higher. So, we doubled the number of students taking it, and they all received that top, that high score. Another one that stands out might be U.S. History. You'll see, you know, a large increase from forty-seven percent of students in 2018 earning a three or higher, moved to sixty-six percent. Also, statistics. Whoops. Statistics went from thirty-six percent of students to seventy percent. It's a small number of kids, but still, they're doing much better on the test. And then, Biology. For Biology, you can see that seventy-five percent of students got a three or higher in 2018. And then, this last year, ninety-five percent of students, and there were twenty students that took that test. So, ninety-five percent of them got a three or higher in Biology. So, we have great improvement on advanced placement scores, and that's continuing. And that's going to help our students, because not only do they earn college credit for taking these tests, but I know from my own children, when they took an advanced placement course, they found that was one of the best things to help prepare them for college, than anything else they had done. Just the rigorousness of the course, the preparation that they have to do, it's college-level. And it really helps to prepare students. So, it's a, it's a great indicator to show that our kids are going off to college, and they're ready to be successful.
Any questions for Jane? There's no...
There's another test kids take, similar to the PSAT and SAT. What is it, ACT?
There are other tests.
Do we get result, do we get results from those tests?
We don't, I mean, those...
Very few of our kids take the ACT.
Right.
It tends to be used more widely out west.
All right. I just didn't know. We have ten kids, and we get results from them.
We may get something, but it's a worry about that number.
And, and the reason we're presenting on these PSAT and SAT, those are the state tests for Tenth and Eleventh Grade. So, you'll see the high participation rates that...
I just remember one of my children takes the ACT.
Okay.
And no results.
Yeah.
Lisa?
Jane or Barry, do you have any, do you have any anecdotal evidence that the school's decision to cover the cost of the AP exams in any way helped to increase these numbers?
I don't have anything I can cite.
Thank you.
But I do know that, since we started, started to add an AP course every year when I first became superintendent, that has had a dramatic impact on culture. But I can't speak specifically to the money.
Is there a way for us to measure that?
We probably could look at the kids who have asked for reimbursement over time, and see how they did. But to say it's a direct correlation?
Right.
I'm not sure.
Right. That's why I said anecdotal, just whether or not you had any sense of...
Another factor that I think has helped to improve those scores, though, has been that the last two years, they've taken the tests at URI. So, our partnership with URI has really been helpful, because you can see those were the two scores that were in the over seventy percent. And just the experience for students to take a course at the uni, to take the test at the university, I think really helped to elevate their expectation.
I don't want to have anecdotal evidence of...
Yeah.
Great. Great. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions for Jane? No? That brings us to letter F.
So, letter F is, I am requested by Donna Chambers. And she was, because there's been some media attention to school facilities, she, she wanted to discuss that. She, she notified me that she was satisfied, having read the leases, that we are responsible. I have consulted with legal counsel, and he's in agreement with that. But we gave you all the leases, so that you could review them also.
Okay.
Yes. I'm glad that she puts us on agenda, because I believe that the Charahoe School District got taken for a ride in nineteen ninety-nine, when they signed this agreement.
Which, which agreement?
Richmond, the Richmond lease. The original school land was purchased from the Browning Farm Estate. The area where the tennis court, and the pond, and the area that we've taken the most heat from, was purchased through a Green Acres grant, through the State of Rhode Island. And that land was purchased from Meadowburg Farm. I, I think that behooves to find, the asset town of Richmond, I'll, I'll do this on the committee request, the copy of what the Green Acres obligated us to, or the, or the town of Richmond to. Because, you know, the tennis courts, they need to be replaced, the surface. I looked at the basketball court, which I know that we had given the school, the town recreation department permission to build that tennis court on the school property. And that thing is, is a health hazard. I, I would suggest that we send a crew over there as soon as possible, and take them baskets down, so that, that court will be unusable. There are cracks in there, two and three inches wide, where the asphalt is actually separated to the point where there's two and three inches wide, eight and ten feet long. And we don't, it's our liability, according to, to the lease here. We don't need somebody going over there, breaking an ankle, or twisting a leg, or whatever, on that. And, you know, I, I just, I just, I'm not sure that the Green Acres grant, that that land, like you say, where the tennis court, and it obligates us to, to maintain it, because...
So, can you just, the Green Acres grant?
It was, it was back in the, I, I forget the, I'll get the, I can get the exact date.
Can you get that for me?
Do a little more research. But that, that piece of property was purchased through Meadowburg, from Meadowburg Farm.
But so, the green money was used to purchase property? And there may be some conditions?
Yes. Yes. And I think that, that, that the town took us, took us for a ride personally, when they, when they made that our responsibility with the lease, because that was...
We signed that.
I know.
Right.
But, you know, that was originally envisioned, from what I was been told by people that know, was a nature area. There was going to be a swimming, swimming hole there. I, I mean, an ice skating pond there. And somebody decided, well, they need to, need to make the pond deeper, so they could do fire protection. Well, anybody that goes by Meadowbrook Golf Course in the summertime knows there's no water running under, under Route 138 there. So, the fire protection was a, was a, was a joke. So, I, I just, I'm just concerned that maybe we're, we're, we're doing something that we don't have to, because once we get, we're spending money, district's spending money to, to do a survey of, of the costs of upgrading our facility. I don't want us to be on the hook to maintain that piece of property if it's not, not required.
All right. So, I'm going to get what I can from the town.
We'll, we'll make note of that in the Section Ten. Okay. Thank you. Ms. Stanley?
Susan attended a meeting Tuesday night at the Town Council, and they were discussing, they were discussing whether or not they should be the ones to pay for the upgrading of these houses you're talking about, or is it the school's responsibility?
Okay. So, which town?
I don't know.
Richmond.
Okay. So, it's on their radar as well. So, we need to dig into what additional agreements are. We'll, we'll take that up at the end of the meeting. Yep.
Just a quick comment. I'm so glad Richmond residents brought this subject up. Thank you very much, Mr. Decker.
I don't, I don't, I feel we're a community.
Absolutely.
And we shouldn't be backstabbing each other in the back, over, over things that are not...
About two weeks ago, I mentioned this also to Barry. I thought there was actually a... Remember that?
Okay. I think I do, but...
Okay.
I'm going to make you take the podium. Please state your name and what town you're from.
Thank you. While I do definitely agree with Mr. Decker's statement that that's not safe, that is, and I would hate to see it taken down and nothing be put back, because it's definitely an area that the kids use for intramural things, for gym class. I mean, we have a lot of open space there, with not a lot going on, you know? So, that is where kids currently, the condition it is or not, they were, up until now, using that for gym class, intramurals, you know, all different activities. So, it would be great if, and this is something I brought up a couple of years ago, about the condition of that. So, I think the town and the school, it's great to figure it out, but I don't want to see it, you know, just taken away either.
Understood. Yes, sir.
So, I think it's appropriate under this agenda item, to let me give you an update on what our plan of action is.
I agree.
Knowing that everything is not certain. So, a review of the lease would indicate that we are responsible. And your legal counsel agrees with that opinion. So, in your last budget, you put aside $5,000 to develop a site plan. So, we're, we're moving on that, because you approved your budget. The site plan will, will include at least one public meeting. Site plan development will include at least one public meeting. There are, there is DEM Recreation money available. We are not an eligible applicant. Only a municipality can apply for it. So, our plan is to develop the proposal based on this site plan. And one, part of the scope of work is like low maintenance. Low maintenance costs is, the facility's not available anywhere else on our property. So, we have like some conditions that we've put on this. We would write the grant and ask Richmond to submit it, because they are an eligible applicant. So, that's kind of the path we're heading down. If we learn something new from the, what is it called? Green Acres, we can certainly put a stop to it. But to do nothing right now, honestly, given that report and my own observations, would be not good.
Agreed. All right. So, any further discussion on this? There is no vote to be taken. We'll add any further follow-up at the end of our, our meeting. Okay. That brings us to letter G.
So, there is, Susan did some digging and found that there is some technical assistance money available to develop a facilities plan. So, first step is to approve this agreement. That makes us eligible for the money. But there has to be a formal building committee, approved by the voters, to access this money. Tomorrow, we're going to write a letter asking them to waive that requirement, and to allow your subcommittee, that you've already formed, to access this money. Because we don't have the expertise in-house to do long-range planning for buildings. So, you need this, you need some money to do this right. So, my, my recommendation right now is that you approve the agreement.
So, move. All right. Motion and a second to approve the memorandum of agreement for technical assistance and guidance discussion.
I, I see why we would want the building committee, the school building committee, to have these certain, the certain people in there. But if it's just us or our subcommittee, would we have people come in with expertise that might help us? Or help the school?
So, they may come back to me and say, well, if you reconstitute, and add certain individuals to it? It may be, they might just say no.
They might just say no.
So, I won't hurt to ask.
Because I think it's important to have some of the players that they recommend. Yes, Sue.
It's also going to be done in conjunction with an architect.
Okay.
This is a huge project. It's a multi-year. The plan would be for it to last at least five years, if not longer than that. And there is actually someone, someone from RIC coming down within the next couple of weeks to tour every single facility, inside and out, to see where they can see what needs to be done. Do our oil, you know, do the burners need to be replaced? Do the roofs need to be replaced? Similar to the five-year plan we're working off of right now. But the, you have to have this plan in order for you to be eligible for any housing aid. And there are multiple steps. And the first step would be for us to do a letter of intent that's due by this January. And then, there's multiple stages that you have to meet. So, having an architect onboard is, will facilitate it for us.
Thank you.
Further discussion? No? Those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Excellent. That brings us to consent agenda items. I believe we're going to pull A1, 2, and 3. Yes? Anything else need to be pulled? No? Okay. I am.
I make a motion to move the remainder, but before I do, I want to recognize K donations. A donation from Kenneth Mitchell of Wood River Junction, Rhode Island, of two graduation gowns and caps, green and white, for students in need.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to move the remainder of the consent agenda items. Those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. That brings us to A1. Can I have a motion to approve it?
Motion to approve A1? Second.
Motion and a second to approve A1. Any discussion? No? Those in favor? And abstaining? Thank you.
Motion to approve A2? Second.
Motion and a second to approve A2. Any discussion? Those in favor? Abstaining? Thank you.
Motion to approve A3? Second.
Motion and a second to approve A3. Discussion? All right. Those in favor?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Abstaining? All right. We're good. Thank you. Excellent. That brings us to reports.
That must be me.
That must be you. Section Nine.
So, we had a Health and Wellness Subcommittee meeting last week. Last week. You probably read in the media that Hope Valley School was awarded a $2,500 grant for creativity, which fits in beautifully with their specialty. You may have also read in the media, or maybe I told you, that the Alternative Academy, because it's designated as a school in need of improvement, becomes eligible for federal funds, received a grant of $152,000. And then, I've already talked to you about number three, under the, with the leases. Number four, there's a provision in your contract with NEA that if there's a high demand for conferences, teachers are allowed to use one of the, one of the building-based PD days for parent-teacher conferences. Richmond School has sought authorization to do that. I have approved it. So, part of that day will be devoted to parent-teacher conferences. The Say Something anonymous reporting system will go live in a few weeks. I believe the date is November 18th. We are doing a training for kids next week at the middle school and at the high school. And the training will be offered to parents also.
Excellent.
Did I say May 18th?
No, November 18th.
Oh, November 18th. Okay. Oh, November eighteenth, okay.
What a memory. Let's dig a lot, never make it. So just that. Yeah. All right, we're going to see, coming events.
Coming events, ten twenty-five, Charles Town School Pumpkin Glow and Book Fair. Ten twenty-six, Decores Pancake Breakfast at Applebee's in Westerly. Twenty-seventh, Hope Valley School PTO Trick or Trunk. Some of these times have been changed because of the triple E threat. Ten twenty-eight, Ashway School Flu Clinic. Ten twenty-nine, Charles Town School Picture Retake Day. Ten thirty, High School Flu Clinic. Ten thirty-one, Charles Town School BMX Assembly. Eleven one, Secondary grading period ends for the first quarter, leave that. Eleven one, Middle School Dance. Eleven two, Hope Valley School PTO Vendor Fair. Eleven four, Winter Sports Meeting. Ashway School PTO Meeting, eleven five. Charles Town School PTO Meeting, eleven five. Middle School Improvement Team, eleven six. PTO Middle School, eleven six. And eleven eight, is that day I was just referring to. There's no school for students, because professional development for teachers. And then eleven eleven is Veterans Day.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Section ten, School Committee Request for Future Agenda Items or Legal Opinions. And this is the Green Acres Agreement.
My request would be to ask the town of Richmond for any and all information pertaining to the Green Acres-
Okay.
...grant that they received. Late, late sixties, early seventies, I can get, I'll get the exact date, but they should know it, they should have it over there.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Lisa.
I have two requests, Chair. One is for the RIASK Workshop on November second, supporting adolescent sexual health for positive academic outcomes. I plan on attending. If any other school committee members attending as well, I thought it just might be nice to provide a few highlights from the training, if they're relevant to the district. So we throw it on the agenda, then we can talk about it. If anybody goes, then we'll just table it.
Could you clarify that, an agenda item? Is that what you're looking, want to make sure?
Yes, just, just put on RIASK Workshop, Supporting Adolescent Sexual Health for Positive Academic Outcomes.
That was one.
Yep. And the other one is, not immediately, but for budget, budget workshop season, if we can accumulate any information around the funding aspect of the AP exams.
Okay.
So we can at least evaluate whether that's something we should continue to fund, or release those funds towards something else. That would be useful.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have agenda items or legal opinion requests? Going once. All right.
Ready?
Yeah.
Make a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn. Those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you all.